I am calling this meeting of the Town of Silver City Council to order. Councillor Amen Smith will be joining us tonight via telephone. Councillor Amen Smith, welcome.
Thank you.
Would you please stand and join us in the Fledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of the town, we'd like to welcome everybody. Happy Valentine's Day. I like to think of Silver City as the city of unconditional love, so it's pretty appropriate for Valentine's Day. The first item on the agenda requiring action is public input.
Proclamations first, okay?
First item on the agenda requiring action is proclamations. We have two proclamations tonight. The first one will be presented by Mr. Raul Torrieta, and we'll come down to the podium so that he can present that to the council and also to Mr. Brown.
Oh heck yeah, absolutely. Well, like I said, I had a cowboy hat on, and I think it'll be the last time we ever wore a cowboy hat. Are we ready? The Legislature of the State of New Mexico, 53rd Legislature Session of 2017, Senate Memorial 30, introduced by Senator Howie C. Morales, a memorial declaring February 18th, 2017 Silver City Territorial Charter Day in the Senate. Whereas on February 15th of 1878, Governor Samuel Axel signed a Town of Silver City Territorial Charter, and whereas this is the 139th anniversary of the charter's signing, and where else Silver City is the oldest continuously incorporated municipality in New Mexico, and whereas Grant County was formed in 1868 from the western portion of Doñana County, and whereas after Silver City was discovered in 1870, the town title was laid out and the name of the fleeting community was selected, and whereas in 1871, Silver City was designated as a Grant County seat and consisted of 284 dwellings, five smeltering furnaces, two hotels, two printing offices, a liver lease stable, a jewelry shop, a watchmaker's shop, two shoemakers, six quartz mills, 10 retail shops, three bakeries, three meat markets, a brewery, four carpenter shops, two blacksmiths, a lumberyard, and a brickyard. And whereas in 1872, community leaders proposed a bill to the territorial legislators to authorize the incorporation of Silver City, but the bill failed to pass and feeling an unrest began the growth of the community. And whereas, community leaders felt that the need of Silver City were not going to be recognized by the territorial legislature, and whereas, to make matters worse, the territorial Republican administration had reduced the numbers of legislative representatives to the territorial government from four to two. And whereas Silver City leaders were feeling disenfranchised and the seat for the session movement were sworn. And whereas, led by the resident of Silver City who had grown disenchantment with the New Mexico-Grant County petition to the federal government to become a part of Arizona Territory, and whereas Silver City leaders felt that Grant County was both economically potentially cultural aslarned with Arizona than with New Mexico. And whereas, Grant County waited until 1876, the 100th anniversary of the founding of the United States, to propose legislation that would allow Grant County to succeed from New Mexico. And whereas, the Arizona territorial representative introduced a bill, but it died in committee and was never acted on. And whereas, after the failure of the session effort, Silver City leaders regrouped and obtained a sponsor of the bill authorizing the territorial charter of Silver City that was introduced in the New Mexico Legislature on January 31st of 1878. And whereas, the bill passed unanimously and was signed into law on February 15th of 1878. Whereas the newly granted and hard-worn territorial charter, Silver City residents could elect city officers and participate in self-governance. And whereas, the charter allowed taxes to be collected to use for public improvements such as streets and sidewalks and provide public safety. And whereas, obtained territorial charter allowed fleeting community to achieve even greater growth and prosperity. Now, therefore, being it resolved by the Senate of the State of New Mexico on February 18th, 2017 to declare Silver City Territorial Charter Day in the Senate, and being further resolved that the copy of this memorial be transmitted to the mayor of Silver City. Signed and sealed at the Capitol in the City of Santa Fe, Johnny Sanchez, President of New Mexico State Senate, Howie C. Morales, New Mexico State Senate, Lauren M. Narango, Chief Clerk, New Mexico State Senate.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Torrieta, for initiating this with Senator Morales and the State Senate. We appreciate it. It's a pleasure for me to turn this over to the Town of Silver City and to recognize that it was the same set of city councillors that we have today, including Councillor Amen Smith, who initiated the ordinance that would allow us to celebrate this special day in Silver City on the Saturday closest to February the 15th. So in this case, it will be February the 18th, and that's his upcoming Saturday. And Mr. Brown, I know you wanted to play that proudly in City Hall, and we appreciate it very much. Thank you. And I want to thank the councillors for taking the initiative on this last year. Now, I've got a proclamation that I would like to issue to the city council and also to the city staff, to Mr. Brown and the other staff. A proclamation, a day to honor the territorial charter of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico. Whereas on February the 15th, 1878, the Speaker of the Territorial House of Representatives of the State of New Mexico, Juan B. Paton, presided over passage of an act to incorporate the Town of Silver City in the County of Grant, which was signed that day by the governor, and whereas this act of incorporation constitutes the official recognition by the territory of New Mexico that certain rights and powers of self-governance shall be granted in perpetuity to the citizens of the Town of Silver City. And whereas, for 139 years, this territorial charter has provided a model of self-governance in the state of New Mexico to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of its inhabitants. And whereas, pursuant to Resolution 2016-02, the Town Council of the Town of Silver City deemed it appropriate that the town and its inhabitants so annul the honor the passage of its territorial charter and remember those persons responsible thereof. Now therefore, I Ken Ladner, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim February the 18th, 2017 as Territorial Charter Day, and that the inhabitants of the town are encouraged to honor said day with a recollection of the town's history and such celebration as might be deemed appropriate. It's an honor for me to present this to the Town of Silver City. Mayor Croton, Madison?
Let's not cover up.
We don't want all the councillors coming to take over them because you're all part of this.
I've only made 12 of these, and they're not dated.
Oh wow.
And that's actually the survey of the, in 1874, of January 31, and I'm gonna give you this shirt for it.
Thank you very much.
Although it will be dated if anybody has it, but those are the original ones, and I made 12 of them.
Thank you.
All right?
And I would be happy to, if it's possible, to buy one for each of the councillors.
Absolutely, we'll take care of that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is public input. Am I in the right sequence now? Okay. The first person to sign up was Punky... Can't read that last name. Punky, would you come up and identify yourself and give your input?
My name is Punky Garrettson. I am a native of Silver City, actually of Santa Rita, and the owner of Blackwills Antiques. I don't think so. Okay. Shall we start over?
Yes.
I was born in the pit. I am the owner of Blackwills Antiques, and this letter is pretty self-descriptive, and I'm assuming all of you can read, so I will dispense with that. Basically, I think you know we've got a parking problem downtown, and it appears to me that we need to get our heads together and do something about it. And quite often in government, it's like eating an apple. You eat the apple one bite at a time, and I would like to suggest the first bite of the apple should be lines that indicate car spots. I don't know what you call them, but we used to have them in the day, and if we were to do that, I have estimated that we'll get an additional 20 parking spaces on Bullard alone. I stand and look out my door at the insurance agency. Everybody thinks that the parking space starts at the end of the guardrail, and there's four to six feet there, not being used. Then the next person comes up, and they aren't real sure how close they are to the other guy's bumper, so they give it lots of room, and that's five feet to eight feet there. And I think if we were a little bit, thinking a little bit ahead, go ahead and do that. There are many other steps to this process, but as I say, I believe we start one step at a time, then hopefully we can take care of some of the other problems. And if anybody has any questions, that's fine.
Thank you very much, Punky, we appreciate it.
If you guys can debate it, and let me know.
Thank you. Next is Julia Robinson.
Hello, thank you. I appeared before you back in September, and I'm here again with essentially the same questions. I ask you then to adopt a tree ordinance because my neighbor's trees were halfway over my roof, and in the meantime, I've taken care of that at my own expense. But I'm asking now, I've been told that none of these pictures that you're looking at, none of the debris on the ground violates any kind of ordinance. And I've also been told that there's no way to enforce an ordinance with the vehicles that have been, or as long as people pay their taxes, there's nothing anyone can do about this lot next to me, which also has a house on it with a leaking roof in the historic district. And what I asked you last time was to look ahead, way ahead, and to think about how much of the historic district you want to go to remove, and what's going to happen to the attractiveness of Silver City if you allow this to just progress as it is. This house is in the historic district, it's an old house built in the 1800s, beautiful house, but the owner lives in Tucson, the roof is leaking, the floor is buckling, and this is the lot that I'm looking at out my kitchen window. So again, if you don't have ordinances against this kind of debris, or against trees limbs falling on other people's property, or against abandoned vehicles, I would like to suggest that you think about adopting those. If you do have those ordinances, I suggest you think about enforcing them. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is council comments. Councillor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I participated this past weekend in the Chocolate Fantasia, Fantasia, Fantasy. Anyway, I thought it was really interesting, there was a lot of people there. I met some people, I met a lady from China, and there were some people from, quite a few people from Tucson, from Carlsberg, from all over, and I had the opportunity to be a judge, and it was, it was nice. It was very, very nice, and I saw a lot of people there, and a lot of people were dressed up nice. I think we should do this more often and have more, spend days. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Amen Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to greet everyone from the East Coast, and I just want to say that I wish that there was a live video stream so that I could have enjoyed that dramatic set of proclamations. And I miss you all, and I'll be back as soon as I can, and I have no other comments.
Thank you, Councillor Amen Smith. Councillor Bettison?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to join Councillor Ray in saying that I also was fortunate enough to be, I was a site judge for Chocolate Fantasia, and I was amazed at the number of people downtown. I just truly was impressed with the sites that I visited, and judge on Wild West days was the theme, and I just thought it was incredibly well-done event, and it was wonderful that we had really nice warm weather. I'm not sure the mayor thought that with all the clothes he was wearing, because he was wearing the same outfit, but people really enjoyed the day, and it was really nice to see so many people downtown saying, "I've never been in this shop before, I have to go back." So I think that it did a couple things. It introduced, reintroduced many of our local townsfolk to what we have downtown, the shops that we have downtown, our Silver City Museum, which had a fabulous display that they, I think, got out of the collections and also had borrowed some material for the display. It was outstanding, and I think it also introduced a large number of people that were from afar to our quaint little town, and hopefully they'll come back for all the events that we have that are coming up. So I want to thank the Chocolate Fantasia, all the folks, all the chocolatiers, everyone who was a judge, I think that Mrs. Ladner was a judge for it as well, and thank everybody who volunteered throughout the whole event, and I want to thank the mayor for dressing in this beautiful outfit that he's wearing from the 1870s because it really fit with the time span of what was going on, so thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Bettison. Councillor Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. I have actually something to say. The first thing is that I recently had the opportunity to attend Grant County Day at the Legislature, along with several other members of the town staff, and it was a really great event. I recommend it highly to any citizen who's interested in knowing a little bit more about what happens at the Legislature, as well as going and just supporting our town and our county on that day. I can tell you that this is the second year in a row that that was not handicapped accessible, and because the town is sponsoring it, I'm hoping that we can work towards making it accessible, because I would hate for any resident to go out there and feel as awkward and as unwanted as I have the last two years. I also would like to give thanks to Kelly Kettington, the executive director of the Arts and Cultural District. She was here at a recent meeting, and I expressed some frustration with the lack of diversity in the advertisements that are being done. Since that meeting, she and I and the photographer who does all of the ads had a meeting and discussed the situation, and I've been assured that by the end of the summer, there will be a portfolio of images that can be used that are a lot more diverse and a lot more inclusive of our local town residents, which is something I really appreciate. I appreciate her taking that upon herself to do that. Another thing, and actually this is a question for Mr. Brown, I would guess. Who is doing our translations for pamphlets and things such as the ones we got from the Sustainability?
I don't know.
Okay, well, there's more than a handful of errors on these, so I'm just concerned that we're, you know, just like every person who speaks English that doesn't necessarily know proper grammar, it's the same thing in Spanish, so if we could find somebody that could do that correctly, that would be great. I know of at least one person who would probably volunteer to do that if you asked her, the American Spanish professor from WNU. Also, I'd like to thank the fire department. I had several firefighters ask me for a meeting so they could tell me a little bit about what goes on at the fire department. It's not just as simple as going and putting out a fire, they do a lot of other community events, and they do provide a lot of services. I have to say that I have been remiss in not spending more time with the fire department because I don't ever get any complaints about them, so I don't usually call them and ask them what's going on, and I probably should have done that a little more. I learned a lot about some of their needs, what their equipment needs, and things that are going to be coming up in the future. A lot of their equipment is very, very expensive, so it's something that we're gonna really have to think about in the next few years because there are some things that need to be replaced already, so hopefully we can work on coming up with some grants or something to do that. And like I said, I would just like to tell all those firefighters, thank you for giving me some of their time this past week. And then the last thing is, I am very sorry to say that I will be missing Territorial Charter Day. I've had a death in my family, and the services are in Albuquerque on Saturday, so I will be there instead of here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Bettison. Any other comments? Councillor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I was talking to Mr. Brown a little while ago, and there is a concern on Boston Hill, and the concern is that they think that the city is putting on, bringing up the road that the trail is, and that's not true, correct, Mr. Brown?
That's right, there's a piece of property up there that we've been having problems with. There's a private owner that is looking to sell some property up there, their property that they own up there, and so the real estate agent who's been listing it has been blocking the trail there. So we're trying to reroute everything around that property and make it accessible.
And the city has nothing to do with it, no?
No.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Councillor Ray? Okay. Any other comments? I have a few comments. I'd like to echo some of the comments other council members have made. This past Saturday was a wonderful event, and it just brought home to me what makes Silver City such a great community. I'm not sure how many volunteers were involved in this, way more than 100 that I initially informed of, and this is not just the case of last Saturday, it's the case throughout the year. We have so many hundreds and maybe thousands of volunteers that contribute their time and energy to make Silver City the place we love to be in, and so I want to publicly thank all of them. It's been quite enjoyable to look back in time and to try and place myself in that time period, and that was made a little easier by the getup, by the Victorian dress, and in the way of information, the top hat was a very important part of the attire, and there's an etiquette associated with the top hat. And a lot of the etiquette we have, we had in the early days of Silver City came from Europe, with the immigrants from Paris and England and those countries. For example, in Paris, the men literally glued the top hat to their head, and they wore it in all public places. In England, there was, it was a no-no to wear your top hat into, say, a restaurant or into someone's home, but you could wear it at a public dance, or any public event. You could wear it, except when you sat down, you were supposed to take it off, and it was, it was really bad manners to put it up on the table by you. You would set it down on the floor under your chair. So it's been fun for me just to do a little research on that, and it was a great time in Silver City. What an excitement those early citizens must have felt when they finally got their territorial charter. And they were called, in Santa Fe, they were called the Rebels, just as they called the folks in Santa Fe, the Santa Fe Gang, I think it was. I have one more item. It's been brought to my, to the town's attention that Loretta Wright... Anne, is she here tonight by any chance? Loretta Wright, USSA, which is an acronym for the United States, what was that, Anne? It deals with the softball association? Was inducted into the USSA Hall of Fame Director category on February 11th, 2017, at the Los Cruces Convention Center. at the Las Cruces Convention Center. Ms. Wright has been a part of the USSA organization since 2007, and has received numerous awards to include Baseball Tournament Director of the Year, Slow Pitch Director of the Year. She has also been the USSA Summer League President in T-ball, baseball, fast pitch, and slow pitch since 2012, and has assisted in the organization and the Wounded Warriors softball team. Her dedication, hard work, and success in working with the youth, to seniors and our veterans, is a benefit to the community and to all who participate in the USSA sports. Thank you for bringing this to my attention, Mr. Brown. The next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Are there any changes? Okay, no changes. The next item is the approval of minutes of the January 24, 2017 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Ray?
I move to approve of the minutes of the regular meeting held January 24, 2017.
Okay, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion as standing.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is reports. Anne, you have a report on early voting.
Yes, Mayor and councilors. I just wanted to let everybody know that tomorrow, early voting starts at City Hall from 8:00 to 5:00 every day until March 3rd, with the exception of Saturday and Sunday. And we're closed Monday at City Hall, but on our normal business days, 8:00 to 5:00. And then our elections, March 7th, Tuesday, the polling place on that day is at the Women's Club.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the council? Councilor Bettiston?
Remind everybody the elections that are, the seats that are up for election. And just explain, I think that Monday is President's Day? Is that what it, okay. The town offices are closed on President's Day, Monday. The election on March 7th and during this early voting period is for councillor in District 1 and councillor in District 3 for a two-year term. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Are there any questions or comments relative to early voting from the public? Any other reports, Mr. Brown?
Sergeant Ben Viegas is here to do a report.
May I ask?
Excuse me, just a minute. Councilwoman Smith, can you hear us okay?
Yes, sir, I can. Thank you for that.
Okay.
I was asked to come and do a small presentation on burglary process and from start to finish by our chief, Ed Reynolds. Usually, when it starts, there's a person who calls, because somebody's broken into their house, or they find items missing from their house. The scenario I'll give is, say, you go on vacation a day a week, and you come home and you find your front door either broken into, a window broken, and you find items missing. What normally happens is the person will call, the police, or I'm sorry, dispatch, and they will in turn get all phone information stuff from the victims, and then call law enforcement to go to the house. Law enforcement will in turn talk to the victims of the burglary, and they will get general information for an original report. Once they get that information, they go ahead and they call out a detective, depending on if it's during the day, they'll call me and I will designate what detective to go, or if it's at night, we have a detective on call that will go to the scene. They will kind of get a little bit from the victim themselves of what kind of happened between what dates that they were gone, what they were missing, if they had any serial numbers possibly from items that were taken. Then the officer will do a walk through the house to see if where in fact the point of entry was, if there's any obvious evidence that's been laying around, tools, any type of equipment they used to try and get into the house, or there's been times where flashlights have been left behind by the suspect themselves. After they kind of go through the house and look, they will back out, they'll start taking photographs, they'll start from the outside of the house, and they'll work their way in. Usually, the point of entry of the suspect, unless it's a broken window, then they'll have to go through the door, you know, it's kind of hard to crawl through windows. After they, they go in and notice the evidence, they'll take far-off pictures, close-up pictures. They'll start doing the collecting process. From that day, if it's 12:00, you know, midnight, whatever, they might not go to the surrounding areas and wake up neighbors to see if they know anything. They'll usually try and go the next day to talk to neighbors and see if they heard anything, if they seen any suspects, you know, in the area, strange people might be, you know, around. From there, the evidence that is found, if it is like a DNA-type evidence, they will send it to the lab to see, you know, if in fact there is any type of touch DNA on the items. The last time I checked with the lab, it was anywhere from eight months to a year before they have a turnaround on certain items, just because of the fact that they're a rare swamp from the surrounding areas, you know, sending them. The only place that does the DNA is in Santa Fe. I think the last one of our detectives said is they had had another person they had hired to help out with some of the newer cases that they have had. If there is, let's say, latent prints, we can send those to either Santa Fe or Las Cruces, so latent prints can turn around a little faster. If there is a suspect that is found, then we get the case together, and we go to the DA's office and explain our case to the DA's office. And from there, they tell us if the approval for felony charges on the burglary itself. If we don't find any evidence in the house, a lot of times what we can do is we will inactivate the case. Doesn't mean that we don't do nothing further on it, but it becomes an inactive where later on, if we do find some more information based on somebody talking, somebody gets arrested, they want to give information, you know, we get that information and we'll reopen the case. DNA, like I said, sometimes it takes eight months to a year to get it back. In that turn, they say, yeah, we did find something. If somebody is not in the CODA system, a lot of times, they'll put them in the system, and then it's just a wait game to see if that person gets arrested, his DNA gets put into the CODA system, and it comes from there. And a lot of times, that does take, it takes some time for that to happen from there. Our detectives, we try to be in contact with the victims themselves as much as we can. They do have a heavy caseload that they do work, so sometimes it does get a little mixed in communication with some of the victim. But we do try in turn to do talk to them and let them know kind of what's going on with their case. And we do have some people that come in and kind of frustrated, and I understand, you know, their frustration about, well, you know, you took DNA from, say, a tool in the house, you know, why hasn't you found them yet, you know? And we try and explain to them, you know, that a lot of, you know, nobody is, everybody put into a system, you know, so that is in turn some of the frustration that they've had.
Any questions from the council?
Given Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. Detective Sergeant, Sergeant Detective, not sure which way to say it.
Either way.
But I guess the question I have is, say, you found and took samples of DNA and latent prints. How long can someone, if some of their items have been recovered in unusual circumstances or as part of the case, how long will those items be, you know, how long will it take then to be returned to the folks that were, that they were taken from?
It depends. A lot of times, we will keep the items until we can, we can find the suspect in this, or we can file charges. But a lot of the time, too, is the DA wants that stuff for court, so it has to be evidence that we can produce in court to show them, you know, what was taken, or this is what the DNA was taken off of. In some cases, we were able to get with the DA and were able to do pictures and then return the items back to the victims themselves. But it's kind of a case-by-case deal on what item was, was, what was taken for. Actually, like more of a serious crime, you know, we'll usually keep that evidence until we can, we can give it back to the victims.
I just ask, because sometimes the victims feel victimized, they can't get their possessions back. That may be really important to them. But I know that you work really closely with the DA's office to try to make sure that they can get it back.
Yes, ma'am.
But I just wanted folks to know that it is something that you work out with the DA's office to make sure that you have what's needed for when you, if and when you do go to trial. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for you also. Does this, you were talking about burglaries, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What about drive-bys, students?
Okay.
That would be something different?
It depends. Give me a scenario of what kind of drive-by you're talking about. Like, for instance, is it somebody goes through and there's a drive-by where there's shots in the air, where no buildings hit, or they find casings, and then the neighbor hears some shots?
I'll come to you later.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Khan?
Thank you, Mayor. Sergeant Viegas, thank you for being here. I am the one that requested that Chief Reynolds, or actually, I guess, since he sent you, do this report. And my concern is just that, I know there's a lot of misinformation in the community. We were talking a little bit earlier about how some people think it's an episode of CSI, and it just does not work that fast. If you could just elaborate a little bit about, at what point does it stop being your investigation and move to the DA's office? Just so that people are aware that once you reach a certain point, then it's no longer you that they need to be contacting, it's the DA.
Well, the point where my investigation is done is when we file charges on somebody. After the charges are filed on an individual and it goes to court, then it's the DA's game on that one. They're the ones that'll take it from there, pretty much. Unless more evidence has come up, or the DA says they need some more investigation done, then we'll do that. But once we file the charges, a lot of time, it's, the investigation's done on our end, and it's, pretty much goes to the DA's office.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes, sir. I have a question from Sergeant. My question is, how regularly do you get feedback to people who are victims of these burglaries? I only ask because I think quite a lot of the frustration mentioned by Councilor Khan is folks feel like they don't really know if there's any progress, they don't know if there's any thing that's been filed. Can you give me an idea of the processes that you have in place to stay in communication with people who have been victims of burglaries?
A lot of times, we will tell an individual that, you know, we're looking into this case. If we find further information, we will let them know. Sometimes, it might be a while before we do find any information, and the case will get put aside with other stuff working. Usually, whenever charges are filed, that individual is advised by, because they have to go to court and testify, showing them that they're the ones that got broke into, and so they'll have to go to court so they get notified there. You know, we try as much as we can to keep in contact with individuals, and we might need to, you know, maybe contact them a little more, but we try to do our best to keep in contact with them. Usually, whenever they get assigned a case, they'll call the people to see if any more information has been found, or if they had any more items that are missing. But like I said, sometimes they do get busy with some other cases, and it is a little tough to contact them all for that.
So, Mr. Mayor, can I follow up? I understand that there is a heavy workload, and, but I'm really quite encouraged, and I'll speak to the chief, but I'll also speak publicly here, to have more of a consistent, perhaps, what's going on, disciplinary system to follow up with victims. I know that this is something that I hear periodically, is that folks feel like their case has been kind of simply not being worked. I think they are being worked, but the victims don't know. So, thank you very much for your report, and thanks for your honesty in talking about how you try hard, but sometimes you just don't get to do it.
Any other questions or comments? That's one of the common comments that I receive, too, is the follow-up. People want to know what's going on. Seems like that could be followed with some sort of a callback system, I don't know. But on the other hand, I want to commend the police department and our police for the great job that they're doing. I was reading an article in the paper about the one officer who saw a robbery taking place, and here it is late at night, and he goes into that structure alone, and then turns out, there's another person there. And this illustrates to me how tenuous situations like that are, and how dangerous they can be. I mean, just a routine traffic stop, as we saw what happened in Hatch, can be, can be have devastating results. And so I express my appreciation to the police who go out every day and literally put their lives on the line for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Item 11, the Approval of Consent Agenda. Please note that all matters listed under Item 11, Approval of Consent Agenda, are considered to be routine by the Town Council, and Items A, B, C, D, and E will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. The consent agenda is 11A, the Approval/Disapproval of Resolution Number 2017-05, Adopting a Fair Housing Policy. 11B, the Approval/Disapproval of Resolution Number 2017-06, Citizen Participation Plan CDBG Program. 11C, the Approval/Disapproval of Resolution Number 2017-07, Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Plan and Certification. And 11D, the Approval/Disapproval of Resolution Number 2017-08, Section 3 Plan. And 11E, the Approval/Disapproval of Resolution Number 2017-09, CDBG Procurement Policy. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Ray?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask Mr. Brown a question?
Sure.
Mr. Brown, on this Citizen Participation Plan CDBG Program, is this going to be for public to give you, to get?
Yes, all of these resolutions are resolutions that are required to be adopted annually by CDBG, the CDBG Program, the Mortgage Finance Authority Program. There are multiple programs that require the same resolutions to be adopted. The Citizens Participation Program is specifically to CDBG projects. We most likely will not have anything on CDBG this year, because we've got a current grant that has taken a little bit longer than usual to get going, and so we're not going to be able to apply for a grant this next year. So we're not necessarily going to need to actually use that participation agreement this year. But we will next year, hopefully, well, pretty much positive, because we'll overcome the one that we have this year.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Ray?
I move to approve of Resolution Number 2017-5, Adopting a Fair Housing Policy. I move to approve of Resolution Number 2017-6, Citizen Participation Plan CDBG Program. I move to approve of I move to approve a resolution 2017-07, residential anti-displacement and relocation plan and certification. I move to approve a resolution number 2017-08, section three plan. I move to approve a resolution number 2017-09, CDBG procurement policy.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion with the clarification that this is an approval of a consent agenda. All items are on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on all of these? Roll call please, Ann.
Counselor Ray.
Aye.
Counselor Aiman Smith.
Aye.
Counselor Bedison.
Aye.
The unanimous approval motion carries. Next item is new business. The first item is 12A, the approval slash disapproval of notice of intent ordinance 1255, an ordinance approving a memorandum of agreement providing for a long-term lease with Hidalgo Medical Services Incorporated to manage and provide services to the Silver City Senior Citizen Center and under the provisions of chapter 48, section 48 dash 24 of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Mayor, I will, the reason that, that we're, we're working on this is that HMS is going to take over the senior citizens' programs within Grant County. And, um, and currently, we have a lease with the, with Grant County who currently operates the senior citizen services. But, under our current ordinance, we're not required to do a, an ordinance to, for a long-term lease when it's a government-to-government transaction. So, we didn't have to do that previously. But now that it's a, a government-to-private nonprofit transaction, we are having to, to do the same type, use this process rather than the other one. And, basically, all we're doing is warranting into a five-tier, five-year lease with HMS. They will operate the facility. The only obligations that the town has is because we own it that we will have to pay capital repairs over $5,000. HMS will take care of everything else such as the utilities, insurances, minor repairs, all the things like that. And, and basically, we're not the only ones that are going to have to go through this process. Grant County's doing it for their Hila Miembros facilities. Santa Clara is doing, doing it for theirs. And so, we have to do it individually for the facilities that we own. The town actually constructed the senior citizen center, I believe it was 94 or 95, I'm not positive. And that was constructed using CDVG funds, federal funds, but the town owns it. And although we've never operated it, we do own it and we provide those, the facility and the capital upgrades for the facility. So with that, do you have any questions?
Okay, uh, do I hear a motion? Counselor Ray?
Thank you Mayor. I move to approve a notice of intent ordinance number 121255, an ordinance approving, an approving of memorandum of agreement providing a long-term lease with Hidalgo Medical Services Inc. to manage and provide services to the Silver City Senior Citizen Center under the provisions of chapter 48, section 48 dash 24 of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Counselor Kano?
Mr. Mayor, I will second that motion as stated.
Have a motion in a second. Uh, is there any discussion? Any questions or comments from the general public? We have a motion as read in a second. All those in favor of the motion as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, oppose nay. Motion carries. Next item, 12B, is, is, is item, is the approval slash disapproval of notice of intent ordinance number 1256, an ordinance amending chapter 40, solid waste, article one, in general, sections 40 dash two and article three, collection and disposal of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. Counselor Bedison?
Thank you Mayor. So, um, this ordinance or this notice of intent is to really try to clarify something that's been existing on the books, which is our refuse. We've done recycling for a long period of time, but this now incorporates recycling and how the town will be doing recycling into the code so that it's, there's no question. It also outlines similar things that we already have, which means that your waste receptacles or your garbage cans are the ones that you do pay for, but recycle, recycle, the recycle, receptacles, the recycle cans are not, you don't have to pay for those. They will be delivered to you. And I know that Mr. Brown can explain that a little bit further. And you can always add more of the recycle pickup, um, cans. One of the things that I really like about this ordinance is, well, there's an opportunity for our town residents to reduce the amount of trash that they put in the landfill, which extends the life of the landfill, but also lightens their pocket in the terms that they don't have to pay more for a larger can. The more they recycle, the smaller the waste receptacle that they need to, um, pay for, um, on a monthly basis and have it dumped in, you know, tipping fees is what they call it when they pick it up. So, that's a positive. The other thing that I find real positive is, um, you know, the current recycle bins, although they've been actively used in, used, I mean, some people have three, four or more, they're open to the elements. So, sometimes, when they're being disposed of into the pickup trucks, the trucks that come around to pick up the recyclables, sometimes they don't quite, you know, hit it. And other times, if we have a really bad storm or there's wind, during the day of your term for refuse and recycle pickup, it can end up all over the place. So, these will be in the same sort of receptacles as our trash in, but they'll be green and they'll be definitely highlighted as being recyclable pickup. So, um, there's lots of positives with doing this because Silver City has really made a name for itself for what we call pays you throw. You only pay for what you throw away. You don't pay for your recycling right now. Um, the other thing about this is that it, the NOI actually outlines the same sort of procedure that we currently do with our other fees. The only time that we would have any fee adjustment for the waste receptacles and for the tipping fees would actually be if, um, it seems that we're not making sure that the projected debt services are being covered. And I think that there's some other ideas that if, if you're not, um, if you're not paying for garbage currently through the town system, but you are getting your recyclables picked up, I'm going to let Mr. Brown talk about that and talk about the, the fee schedule on the, on the back. So, I'll let you do that.
Mr. Mayor, basically, the intent of this ordinance is to do two things. One is to give us a mechanism to enforce the recycling, uh, program. As, just like the garbage cans, they've got a, these containers need to be out at the same time. They need to be wheeled back at the same time. The, you know, they cannot put trash in the recycling container. You can't put recycling in the garbage container, but not, you can't do the, do it the other way around. And as you can see with the pictures that we've provided you, the actual recycled containers have the recycling emblem on the side. They are green. And on the top of the container, it actually has pictures of what is recyclable in single stream. And so, we will be delivering those containers with some flyers. We, we currently have already started picking up, uh, commercial recycling. We started that yesterday. The residential recycling will not start till the second week of March. It's going to take, because there's approximately 2,500 containers that we've got to get out to residences. But, at the beginning of March, we are going to start promoting it very heavily, what you can recycle and what days, when it's going to start. So, when you need to actually take out your green recycling container rather than the current blue one that you have for, for the solid waste authority. As per the, the rate, we basically handle it, I propose to handle it like we do the water sewer rates to review annually. In previous years, the, the town used to just set a certain percentage rate increase on an annual basis. The last time we had a rate increase with the sanitation fund was back in 2000, fiscal 2014. And, um, and since then, I haven't brought any recommended increases, but we need to look at it every year. The, as with the water and sewer wastewater rates, I have to provide an appendix with the budget every year. I'm providing you with an appendix with this ordinance of the actual rates that we currently charge residences. So, with the adoption of this ordinance, I'm not proposing a rate increase. The only thing that I will be recommending is to add a recycling cost for individuals who currently do not have trash collection in, on their water bill. An example of this is when some of the buildings that are shared, they have one dumpster. And so, only one of the, the business owners on that shared building is paying for the trash, yet the other, other individual businesses on that building are actually using that. And which it's fine because the trash is getting paid for. But yet, when these second and third building businesses want to recycle, we need to charge them because they're not paying the built-in recycling fee under the trash collection fee. So, um, what I was looking at doing was charging for, and I don't know if there's any residential customers that do it like this, but I was looking at a 940 just in case, which is the same as a one pickup for a regular residential customer. And then, um, a one-time pickup cost for each of the different sized dumpsters if a, if a business does not have a recycling bill under their, their rate. I'll add that to the appendix that is included in, for the ordinance adoption itself. And with that, do you have any questions?
Could you explain the senior rate?
Oh, yes. The senior rate is for individuals 65 years and older. They have to put in a short application with a copy of their ID. And, um, the only container that is available for that is the 35 gallon container. And, uh, we have a, a, a separate senior rate for anybody 65 and older, but that is only for a 35 gallon container.
Trash container.
Trash container. If they need to, if they need to use a 65 or a 95, you know, that, that gets into a different, do they have people living with them and those types of things? So, we, we don't have a, a senior rate for 65 and 95. And that was part of the rates that were originally adopted back in 2007, I believe.
So, while the container or the collection is the same, I mean, it's only a 35 gallon container that they can get, their disposal, uh, fee is the last?
Yes, it's less because usually in situations where you've got seniors, they're usually using a lot, throwing away a lot less. And what we're also seeing is a lot of times, those same individuals, a lot of times, they recycle. So, they're not even putting out the garbage can, but every week or two, every couple of weeks or, or even more. Because they're using, utilizing the recycling service more often.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Here.
Oh, Counselor Aiman Smith, please go ahead.
This is a question for Mr. Brown also. Um, Mr. Brown, what kind of practices are we going to put in place to enforce that people are using these recycling carts only for recycling? I'm asking because I know my father, when he got older and got confused, couldn't tell the difference between his recycling cart and his garbage cart. He wasn't now living in our town, he was living elsewhere. But, are there going to, there going to be some one-on-one, you know, training, counseling, help for folks who really have difficulty understanding that you can only put recycling in the recycling cart?
Yeah, that, that's the intent of the picture on top of the recycling container, is it actually shows you what you can put in that container. Second is that, um, only unbagged items can be put in the recycling container so that, uh,
Okay.
Because the, the trash, the, the garbage trucks have cameras that can look at what is falling out of the container. So, if they start seeing bags falling out of it, they can, they've got a radio where they can call in and tell, uh, the secretary that they've picked up trash at this location. And so, code enforcement will go out to those, to those, uh, locations and talk with the, the resident, residences and, and see, you know, whether it's an educational issue or, or whether they were overflowing their regular garbage container and wanted to use their recycling containers and additional trash container. We'll let them know that it's, it's illegal to do that and a second offense will be a citation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Um, thank you Mayor. Just before, um, there's an immaterial change that I have to make. It's not really relevant, but there's a typo on the top of the third page. Uh, in the first sentence, charged to dispose, it says or, and I think it should be saying of, oh. It's just a simple change, but I don't think it's necessary to include in the motion. Right to Robert?
Robert.
Thank you. Okay, sorry. I move to approve a notice of intent ordinance number 1256, an ordinance amending chapter 40, solid waste, article one, in general, section 40 dash two, and article three, collection and disposal of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code.
Do we have a second? Counselor Ray?
Mr. Mayor, I'll submit.
A motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
No.
Any questions from the public? Hall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item, 12C, is the approval slash disapproval of notice of intent ordinance number 1257, an ordinance authorizing issuance of the Town State Shared Gross Receipts Tax Revenue Bonds in the amount of $450,000 to finance improvements to the joint utility system. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Mayor, this is actually, um, a replacement for the SIBLOB application that we submitted for, uh, over the last few months. Basically, what happened was after the state reviewed the SIBLOB, they didn't feel we had the capacity to pay the loan with the joint system utilities revenues, which, um, when I took it to our, our bond person, Mark Vanzuela, they redid the numbers and they, and we did have the capacity to do it. But, um, with, with, through further discussions with him, I decided that I wanted to shorten the period of repayment period from 10 years to three years, from going from $40,000 a year payment to a little over $120,000 a year, which is very affordable out of the water sewer fund. We, we decided to, to secure it with the governmental gross receipts portion of our gross receipts tax. So, this is basically only a replacement for that and- Uh, so this is basically only a replacement for that, and, um, we are going to use it to, uh, replace the utilities under Highway 15 that, uh, we are going to be required to do as part of their project.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Brown? Do I hear a motion? Oh, Counselor Bedison?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, uh, quickly, um, how does, uh, does this impact or decrease or keep the same our current debt service that we have?
Uh, it's going to increase it. Well, actually, you know, it's not going to increase because we're actually paying off one of our loans that's $143,000 a year. And so this is gonna, this is just gonna be in addition, uh, it's gonna, we're gonna continue paying, uh, 120, it's a little over $120,000 a year for the next three years only.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Any other?
And, and just one of that, you have a water sewer fund, whereas the other one was being paid out of gross receipts taxes.
Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? Counselor Connaught?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of Notice of Intent Ordinance, yeah, Notice of Intent Ordinance Number 1257, authorizing the issuance of the Town Silver City Municipal Gross Receipts Tax Improvement Revenues Bonds Series 2017 in an aggregate principal amount of $150,000 for the purpose of, the purpose to, number one, finance the acquisition and construction of certain capital improvements to the town's joint utility system for the benefit of the town and its residents, and number two, pay the costs of issuance of Series 2017 bonds, providing that the Series 2017 bonds will be payable and collectible from the fund and secured by a pledge of the gross receipts tax distributed to the town pursuant to Section, uh, one, dash, seven, dash, one, dash, six point four, MSA 1978, as amended, in parentheses, the State Shared Gross Receipts Tax, close parentheses, writing, "For the disposition of the receipts derived from said tax proceeds prescribing other details concerning the bonds and tax proceeds, including but not limited to covenants and agreements in connection thereof, therewith, and the form, terms, conditions, and manner, the execution of the bonds, or identifying all the actions previously taken in connection therewith, and fulfilling ordinances encompassed herewith."
Thank you for that motion, Counselor Connaught. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Ray?
Yes, I'll, I'll second that.
We have a motion as read and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, nay? Counselor, uh, Ayman Smith?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Motion carries. The next item under new business is 12D, appointments to the Historic Design Review Committee. The town received applications from two existing members who terms expired on February the 1st. The Chair of the Historic Design Review Committee and the Director of the Community Development Department recommend the reappointment of Stephen Schellendick to continue serving in the architect position and Suzanne Gershson to continue servant, servant in the contractor position. If there are no objections from the council, I would like to reappoint these two individuals to the Historic Design Review Committee. Okay, thank you very, thank you. They are so appointed. The last item under new business is item 12E, the approval slash disapproval of changing the regular council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, March the 14th, 2017, at 6:00 PM, to Tuesday, March the 21st, one week later, 2017, at, at 6:00 PM. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve of changing the regular council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, March 14th, 2017, at 6:00 PM, to Tuesday, March 21st, 2017, at 6:00 PM.
Do I hear a motion as read? Is there a second? Counselor Connaught?
Oh, sorry, that wasn't due.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, nay? Counselor Ayman Smith, I have to apologize, I'm so used to you sitting right here to my right. You know, there's this little black box in front of me. But anyways, thank you for joining us tonight. We appreciate it.
I look forward to it. Thank you, sir. Thank God for my town for calling and having us for this meeting.
Okay, uh, the, the motion carries. This concludes the business of the Town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, a motion returned.
Do I hear a motion in a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.